Little hearts in them.
Yeah.
It meant.
I mean.
I'm gonna give him a terrible place needs.
That's a little.
Well, he fixed everything. He never got.
Yeah.
It's a girl always. Biaj.
Prepare to do some kind of hair.
Yeah, I'd have posted everyone.
Eating everyone?
Oh, me. Can be helpful for dealing.
Very particular. My word to Rob is.
How are you doing? Cordova.
Email.
Yeah.
Say that again.
Not me.
No, I mean.
What's the one or whatever?
Well, that's not very nice.
Yeah.
It's it's so. It's almost blissful.
It is.
Really is.
I'm here.
That right now.
Like everyone else.
Yeah.
That'll happen.
Nothing you need.
Yeah.
I can shift the one. I can shift.
As in. But this would have been getting less.
No, I'll just move.
You know, if you think of some of that.
I'm not.
Be in the field a lot this summer.
Just line right here.
Have a crew.
Jump over it.
Have to come back there.
There's all kinds of crazy stuff goes on.
You have. Martin.
That was so good. It's like.
I was like. Bill Dush for a long time.
Got enough.
Oh, yeah.
Crazy.
Like my.
The lake cabin has a. Not this year. I just put in.
There was a little dance.
And I zip home, walk back.
I felt it.
Funding. In the truck and go, here I am.
For law funds that we got. Or in place. Contracting out the new cabinet.
Where?
Station.
Oh, yeah, because.
Oh, I'm scared. Are you? By limit.
No, only has any.
South outside.
Then I have to look at.
Oh, yeah.
It's Mike Mickelson.
Wow, okay, so.
Can't really help you.
I mean, I've definitely paddled to the other one.
I want to.
And it's nice.
And it was in the shade. Just beautiful sun.
I think.
Are you ready for fishing? I saw you in colors.
Uh, well. Regulations. I'm waiting on that.
They're gonna replace. Uh, Port Chalmers cabin. That hopefully will happen. Maybe not next year, but the following year.
Okay.
Excited.
Their funds.
I'll find out.
I can cut part of my finger off today. Right. It's not a real important part.
Okay.
Thanks for that there.
That hurts. So you don't.
What's on?
For the.
What about if they were.
God, just poke a hole in it.
That's just.
Not me.
Clamp and this, that, the other. It wasn't fast for him. Did you flip it open? Now, at least he had some terrible weather. Still aren't guilty.
Just about. I can't, but I don't know. Where's that fancy gavel? I'm just like, what makes that up?
John's always in today asking about something that he's. In the same boat with fishing. All my kids are flying.
This community, because that's this community.
Hey.
Hey. How are you?
Good.
Last Friday, Madam Mayor.
And that. How many times?
Sorry.
No.
All right, here we go. Let's call the meeting to order.
You can't do both.
We are here. For a joint work session between the. Cordova City Council and the Cordova School Board. And maybe I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Sure. Um, Mayor Smith. Here. Deborah Adams.
Here.
Aaron Hanson.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Mike Mickelson.
Here.
Wendy Rainey.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Dave Zastro.
Here.
That is all of council. I'll call the board. Dave Gleason.
Here.
Hank Krutov.
Here.
Emma Merritt. Pete Hefner.
Here.
Kate Trudeau.
Here.
And that is all of school board.
Great. Well, this is terrific. It's great to see so many people around the table. It's good to have company to have.
I think we need a photo.
Yeah.
What's that? We need a photo. It's great.
Right, a class photo.
Yeah.
Yeah, so thanks very much, everyone, for coming. And I think we. Wanted to um. Ask if we could have a joint session because obviously the school board is getting ready to submit its budget. And it seemed like a good time to um to talk about that, to maybe go over for some of the. Um, new and existing council members. It always helps to refresh for me. The timing, you know, how it works between the city budget and the school budget, because they are offset by six months. So we have to. Uh, factor that in. To the planning. And I think a couple of other questions have come up that we will hear about as we. Talk, but I don't have a specific meeting outline. So. If other people have questions, we can do that, too. Maybe. Sam, do you want to just go over the timing of the s- the city budget and the school budget? And.
You should have told me I was doing that. Can I ask Cheryl to do that?
Yeah.
I said quite, I have time riping my head around that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I guess Alex could do it as well. Yes.
Sure.
Who's gonna use this anyways?
Right. Uh, so that. As Mayor Smith mentioned, the. School district and city budget timelines offset by um about six months. So the city's. Fiscal calendar is January one to December thirty-one, and the school district's. Fiscal calendar is July one to June thirty. So um. Probably since its inception as a school district, that's been what it was and likely by the city as well. And so. Um, typically, you know, the this. City Council passes its budget by the end of December, as you know, and that addresses the uh the contribution. Um, to the district. The first half of. Your fiscal calendar addresses the last six months of our fiscal calendar, and then the last half of your fiscal calendar. Starts off the new school year's fiscal calendar. So. Um, I don't know if you were looking for anything beyond that, but um that's sort of the timeline and the juxtaposition of each of the uh. The entities' calendars, fiscal calendars.
I think I could hand this out, too, because it goes school trans- January through June, school transfer July, December, isn't that? Helpful.
Yeah, that's from the budget we approved. That's for.
This is our budget.
Right.
This is from our approved budget. I don't know.
I know we're sharing mics and they're touchy, but if you push them and pull them with this, doesn't make that awful crackling noise because there's a. A whole thing.
Thanks.
Just like that, Alex. Don't do that. Well, like this. Don't have it straight up because it's it gives feedback.
So could I correct it with?
Yes, you may.
Being chastised.
Mother, may I?
Absolutely.
Thank you much.
I hope you hear my head breathing.
So it's just.
Calendar year.
Okay.
So January to December, yeah. Yeah, so what what's in the twenty twenty-five budget right now um? Is the. One point four million.
Oh, thanks.
That we. Committed to the school district for. First half of this year. And then seven hundred and seventy-six thousand for the second half. Of our budget year, which is the first half of their year. Yeah. And. I just thought that would help. To make that clear. I mean, um. I think one thing I noted was that this adds up to two point one something. Eight, two point one eight six, I want to say.
Eight three.
Thank you. And. What's it with the the city's request in the budget that we got? For its next. School year is two point four million. So obviously, there's a three hundred thousand dollar difference. Almost three hundred thousand dollars. So, yeah. Yeah.
So just for clarification, the the January to June timeline, that's the end of this current fiscal year, twenty-five for the school district. And then. That July to December. Transfer, that's the first half of our fiscal twenty-six year. So these numbers indicate two different fiscal years for the district. But the same fiscal year. For the city, if that makes any sense. So. That contribution that we would be looking for would be the difference from. Uh, that ask of two point four, which includes that in-kind contribution. So that amount minus the seven seventy-six.
Right.
Seven hundred and seventy-six would be like. Potentially the city's contribution in its next fiscal year, the January to June.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. Well, but plus the seven. Seven six would still be in there for.
This year. This the city's fiscal year this year.
How much money? How much money are we short?
But I mean, and this is where it comes in, the confusion of two budget cycles. So. We're still going to contribute the seven seven six. It's going to be different for your fiscal year, but for our fiscal year, we're going to still add that into the addition or take it out and add it in.
Right.
We won't look at it for next year.
Right.
So seven seven six. Our last half contribution, which would be there. When we're looking at next year fiscal year twenty-seven.
So it's two four minus seven seventy-six is what?
Well, two three is the cash ask, isn't it? Or is it two four eight oh?
Well. So statutorily, the the city um. The contribution to the city includes both the cash and the in-kind contribution. That's the allowable maximum contribution. Statutorily. So.
Whatever that number is. Nine seven seven six.
Right.
Right. So the cash is two point three.
Yes.
Yeah. So. Yeah. So do folks um? School board members have questions? Council members have questions? That we we've got. Like I said, the. This is what that everybody has the the breakdown um that we receive from the school district.
And maybe if council asks their questions for maybe. Do you know generate our questions?
Okay. Sure. Happy to.
Missed.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
He no, mine wasn't very open-ended, but you have a specific question.
I I just. I the fund balance at the end, and you kind of explained. What has to be in there? Because I know there's like a ten percent rule on that. What has to be in there and? Like you showed the standing fund balance is eight hundred thousand. What's that ten percent of? Like what what needs to be in there to make that ten percent? And is this over that?
Yes. Can you help me with the page?
Uh, two. Well, our, yeah. At the bu- like, there's the total ending fund balance. I just don't understand like what your fund balance ends at.
Right. So. In Alaska statute, that's referenced there at the bottom of the page. It's AS fourteen seventeen five zero. Five A. Uh, school districts can only maintain in their fund balance uh ten percent of what their budgeted expenditures are.
Budget.
So so just to use real. Not real answers or real numbers here, close, but real, you know. The mental math is a little challenging for me at times with big numbers, but ten percent of eight million. Would be eight hundred thousand. That's allowable in our fund balance. However. During COVID, the legislature suspended that ten percent allowable um. Fund balance because districts were receiving federal funds. Uh, to cover mitigation supplies and resources and things during during that period. And so there was an allowable time in which. Uh, districts were able to carry over more than ten percent of what their expenditures were. Um, that is set to sunset. At the end of next school year. So June of two thousand twenty-six. School districts will then have to be back to that ten percent allowable. Uh, fund balance. So between now and then. An amount over that ten percent is is still permissible by that statute.
And. Does the does this budget include the um? The most recent. Numbers in the legislation in House Bill fifty-seven? It's been going through the state.
So the.
The best of your ability.
So as we know, budgets are always best guesswork at any moment in time, right? And right now, of course, the legislature is contemplating um in House Bill fifty or Senate Bill fifty-seven. Uh, an increase of seven hundred dollars to the base student allocation, which is the the base formula for. What this entitlement is for school districts. You know, talk in without getting into politics, but you know, talk is the governor is likely to consider vetoing that. However, we um we built. This budget with a six hundred and eighty dollar increase assumption. So that's what. You know, so if it's uh zero, if basically now, you know, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and make even some more significant uh. Decisions, I guess. But. If that's seven hundred dollar based student allocation goes through, that will net the district about eighteen thousand dollars more. In revenue. So the difference between a six hundred and eighty dollar based student allocation increase and a seven hundred. Based student allocation increase is approximately eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Well, so the base allocation right now is. I mean, you said six eighty is. Not the current.
So that, like, the actual base student allocation number is fifty-nine hundred and sixty dollars. And what was being. Proposed is an increase of six hundred and eighty dollars to that base amount. Right?
But.
So if there's an increase to that base amount by. By. Six hundred and eighty dollars, right? That will take the new number to. You know, you can do the pencil math, but fifty-nine sixty plus six eighty would be the new. Number that we based the budget on. I'm not sure if I.
This current budget.
I wasn't sure if I missed it in here, but um. How many students do you have currently? And then? Do you have any way of predicting? Sort of the population that'll be coming into the kindergarten class for next year for. Budgetary projection. Yeah, great, great question. Um, so we build built the budget based on um. You know, some trend data over time, so about three hundred and sixty students or so. Um, and we kind of carried that over. We look at. What we anticipate our incoming kindergarten. Class to be right around. Between thirty-five and forty students. And then um. The students that are graduating. So we do a roll in and roll out. Um, you know, it's always hard to predict how many Coast Guard families might come in or how many, you know, former Cordovans um might move back. Um, but we basically use that same number that we use this year to to build and to project our budget for next year. And then related to that, um. Some of the dialogue that happened in the last meeting here was talking about. Population growth in the student body. And um I was sort of going back through. My experience of of being a. A member of the school district as a child, and I think we had five hundred students K to twelve. When I graduated in oh one, and the elementary school had about three hundred students. And from talking to some community members and or parents. They said that there's been some remodeling that's happened between now and then. And um we're hearing that your student body is increasing in the elementary school, but you're still. Pretty far away from having three hundred. And I and I know that, you know, the demographics of the students have changed since then, but could you kind of talk to us a little bit about? Why that sort of? You know, number from twenty-five years ago. Isn't necessarily. Going to be as easy as it was then. Yeah, so um. So fifteen years ago, there were four hundred and eleven students district-wide, right? So even from your time in school, that that number. Um, has since come down. So that number. You know, compared to our current number is about fifty students or less. Right now. In the elementary school, we have two teachers per grade level, um except for sixth grade. Sixth grade is. Uh, not the the biggest number of students. But it's the largest single class size. So there are thirty-two sixth graders. Um, so we would really like to, you know, for instructional purposes. Particularly at the lower um primary grades, really try to have that number around fifteen to to twenty. Um, max. And that's kind of what's represented as you go up the grade levels. So there are a few more kids in each of the grades. So. You know, second, third grade have um. You know, twenty or so students per class. You get up to fourth and fifth, they start having twenty-three to twenty-five students per class. And like I said, that sixth grade. Um, number right now is about thirty-three. I think during the course of the year, um at one point in time, we had thirty-four students in one classroom, which. You know, you look around the country and you look around the state even, you know, that that seems to be um. Not a reasonable number, but people say, oh, that's at least that's not forty, it's thirty-five. Um, but here in Cordova, you know, I think the board. And even the community interest is around trying to maintain um relatively smaller class sizes to be able to address um students' needs in a far more um efficient and effective way. So that's um part of the philosophy, at least of having smaller class sizes at the elementary school. Um, so we did some moving around, some restructuring of uh the building um this past summer. We moved um. As you probably remember, the the hound pound at one point in time down in the basement. Um, so that's where the district office offices are. That was done during the um. The renovations in two thousand ten to twelve, and we. Uh, reconditioned part of that space as the library because we needed to move the library from the second floor. Down to the basement in order to create some classroom space for our growing special education population of students. So. Not sure if that quite answered your question entirely, and I wasn't trying to skirt it, but. Oh, that's helpful. I just in in terms of of trying to sort of visualize it, because uh as you're certainly aware, our financial situation isn't great either. So we're trying to, you know, obviously support you as much as we can. But. We we've we've found out today that there's some some changes to some of the the income that we've had that we've been using to fund your services. So. Yeah. And one of the. You said you didn't want to talk.
I didn't, but I. As a former principal, a school of two hundred and twenty-five kids and a a school of over four hundred kids. When you have a small school like we have. Class size isn't just about how many kids are in a class, but if you go from. One, or if you go from two first grades to one first grade, you go from fourteen or fifteen to thirty-some. You know, you can't, they're. Split classes and having kids moving up and down isn't a thing anymore because the common core standards. So you need to have the curriculum be the same for all the kids. And so you can't just combine two. Classes of eighteen and make one of thirty-six to make your numbers work.
I and and I I would add, oh, sorry. I would add to that, just in maybe to get back to your question um. Part of our plan for next year, so those fifth graders that are moving up, right, the two two fifth grade classes. You know, part of the initial plan was if if funds permit permitted, we would try to have two sixth grade classrooms and that fourth grade classroom that's coming up. But those are two two classes, which would be two fifth grade classes. And like every class from kindergarten moving up. You know, we've established as needing really two teachers per grade level. And with considerations around the budget, um what we have decided to do is to. Rather than hire that second sixth grade teacher based on the number of students in both fifth and sixth grade. We we believe, and I need, you know, I want to say this confidently in a public setting, we believe that um. Creating three. Grade five, six combination classes will still be able to serve and meet the needs of um all of the students while at the same time. Reducing the need. Um, ideally, we would have two sixth grade classrooms, but we understand that the ideal. Is probably unlikely for us. And so working to still maintain good class sizes and good instruction. Um, that combination uh. Type of classroom is what we're going to do for next year until. You know, either the fiscal landscape changes or uh something else happens where um, you know, additional revenue could present itself.
And that's fairly common, isn't it? I mean, I've seen it in other school districts, combination of five, six grades and single class.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, it's not unheard of or uncommon.
I had a really general question my as I'm going through the budget and um. I'm just curious, uh, as you're going through this and preparing for this meeting. What in here do you think was a surprise? Things that we should be paying attention to this council? Is there anything in here that kind of took you by surprise or? I I'm just, you know, there's a lot of great information in here, but I imagine there might be a few key things you want us to be aware of.
Um. So so the balance or the the budget that the board um approved, and we have. When it comes to the school. Budgets, often there are two. I guess, processes. One is an approved budget, so that happens first. That's basically me presenting. Uh, the the budget to the board as the superintendent saying. Here's what I can live with operationally. Um, and we've done. What we needed to to balance the budget, right? Um, state statute requires us to pass a balanced budget. Um, and then um. Sometime in uh at this meeting in May or or maybe the June board meeting will present. The budget for adoption, and then we can then submit it to the state. Um, but maybe if I understand your question. What we worked to do to get a balanced budget, um which may be a surprise or an unknown to those folks that weren't following our. You know, our five-month budget development process. So like, we're proposing to draw down uh three hundred thousand dollars from our fund balance to cover expenses. We are not intending to fill that second sixth grade. Uh, teacher position as well as a high school math. Teaching position. So that that net savings is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We are not going to fund. So when we have teachers looking at developing their budgets based on their needs, we ask them to prioritize, you know, priority one, two, and three. Ones being obviously the the most important. Um, so. If we do not fund the priority two and three teaching supplies and materials, that saves us ninety-five thousand dollars. We propose to draw down this, the school district has a scholarship fund that was generated from donations from some anonymous donors that some years passed and and other other folks. So uh, we were, we're going to use a hundred thousand of that two hundred thousand dollar scholarship fund to help balance the budget. Um, for our student activities, uh, sports and other activities like robotics and um, clubs and so forth, we planned on one student trip uh, in a year. And if students want to travel beyond um, what the district has identified in its budget to pay for, um, they'll either need to fundraise or use what are called the CHASA accounts. Those are the uh, high school activity accounts that typically are fundraised funds. Um, so that that net saved us fifty thousand dollars. We will not be filling one teacher aid position um, at the elementary school. So that's a a net savings of sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, we're going to eliminate uh, the coach and chaperone per diem when students travel. Um, for those events, typically we provide a per diem um, for for the coaches and the chaperone. And the per diem is based on the the federal per diem rates and so forth. So that's a savings of thirty thousand dollars. And then um, we, we will be renting the uh, high school to uh, the National Guard again this summer. And that's a a much reduced um, revenue source than what we we got from NVE last year. But um, we planned on using twenty of the twenty-five thousand dollars um, facility use requests that we uh, engaged with NVE on for that. So that, the sum total of of those reductions is nine hundred thousand dollars. And so
Insignificant.
It's not, it's not insignificant. And, you know, thank you for for recognizing that. That increase of the base student allocation uh, nets us around six hundred, that additional six hundred and eighty, right, that's not currently uh, signed in ink yet. Um, but with that assumption, that would generate roughly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for us in in state revenue. So when you add that along with the reductions of nine hundred thousand, that takes us to about our one point five million dollar deficit that we started with. And and again, it's a, it's a great leap of faith and assumption to to make um, from the state level. And we're just sort of in a wait and see pattern right at the moment. And then, again, our request to the city, um, you know, this is, I'm finishing my tenth year as superintendent here in Cordova. And I remember the very, one of the very first meetings that I came to, one of the council members had asked me if there was going to be an additional ask, and I didn't quite understand the que- the question. And they had said, well, the superintendents of years past, they're always coming and asking for more, asking for more. And I said, I'm committed to asking for what we need. I'm not going to ask for any more or any less. But I also understand, you know, the the situation that the city is in in terms of its uh, revenue streams. But um, you know, full transparency, I wouldn't be doing my job in good faith for the district if I wasn't asking for what we needed. And we all have hard, hard decisions to make. I, we understand that. Sorry.
I would like to say something. So the the BSA, I saw some eyebrows raised over there. It's not, they're not just being kind and giving us more money than than the There was a study done on inflation from two thousand eleven to, I think, two thousand twenty-four. They're eighteen hundred and eight dollars behind. That's almost the same amount of money that we got when I was in high school a hundred years ago. So that's kind of a embarrassment to the state, to me. They're not holding up their end of the bargain. So the six eighty is just a small portion of that. And next year, we're going to be in this exact same boat. We're going to have to cut nine hundred thousand dollars. And if that passes, I believe the seven hundred goes into the formula permanently. Which means we're just going to get that. And it doesn't mean we're not going to advocate for more because we would like the other eleven hundred also. Then we wouldn't, there wouldn't be problems like we're having now. So that's the boat we're in. And we, you know, we're going to have a big budget shortfall. So our fund balance, we took, we took money out of that. We're going to have to take money out of it again next year. And that's going to put us dangerously close. I think it has to maintain at four fifty, right? Or we can't pay our bills. So we're, we're trying to hold on to some of that because we know we're going to have to get rid of it next year. That's all I wanted to, I just wanted to share that in case you guys didn't know.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the reason that my eyebrows went up is because I didn't understand, I couldn't follow you when you, I think maybe you just switched gears from revenue to decreasing. But you said the six hundred and eighty revenue would then bring us up to where we're at. But am I not understanding correctly, we, this is done at six eighty?
The additional si- the the additional six eighty to the base student allocation.
This budget includes that money.
Correct.
Okay, that's where I got lost. I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, if by chance the Senate Bill fifty-seven
Yes.
passes, that has seven hundred dollars into it. This, this budget assumption six eighty, if we, if it's passed at seven hundred, we will get an additional eighteen thousand in revenue.
And that's just like twenty bucks per kid or?
Yeah. And the way um, I I know in in years past, I've shared in um, I'll maybe send it uh, to you. I'll just to see how the formula works. So um, it's not an easy mathematical formula of taking five thousand nine hundred and sixty times the number of students that we have. The way that the formula is built is that there are multipliers. So we start with, we do an October count, in October, twenty-day count period, um, where we look at the number of students that are enrolled, the average daily membership is what it's referred to in statute. Um, and so over that period of time, it it has nothing to do with absences or being present. It's enroll enrollment, right? So a kid theoretically could be absent twenty days of that count period. But we would still count them as being enrolled, right? So we would, in essence, get funding for them. So you kind of take a look at that average daily membership and let's just say that we start with three hundred and sixty students. Then there's a geographic cost factor or or multiplier of one point two, three, four for Cordova. So you take that three sixty times one point two, three, four, and you get a new number. And then there's another multiplier um, for um, vocational and technical education. Right? So and and I don't know, I see pencils writing down. So I'm not going to give you the details of all those numbers because I can't recall them. But but you multiply that new number by the multiplier. And then there's a special education factor that has a multiplier. So you multiply that new number. So when you do all of those uh, multipliers, the actual number of students that we get funded for is closer to nine hundred students. It's right around eight, between eight seventy and eight ninety, just based on what that original starting number was. So that's when you take that number times what the base student allocation of fifty-nine, sixty or hopefully what the new sixty-four, whatever number would be. And then that's, that's what the state entitlement um, from the state would be to the district. And that generally ends up in the area of around um, four million to five million dollars. Just depending again what what the student numbers are. Hopefully I didn't complicate things too, too much further.
I just have two questions. Um, one, the, you mentioned um, only one trip for clubs. Does that include varsity sports as well?
It does. It does.
So does that mean that if our teams are going to compete, they're going to need to fundraise on their own? Is that how that's going to work?
So the, let's just stick with sports for a moment versus activities, right? Because they're a li- a little bit different um, in terms of um, regional or state requirements for competition. I'm going to use basketball, and I know I shouldn't because that, but that's the first example that people want to think about. Um, but our basketball teams, for example, they need to play eight um, conference games in order to qualify for regional competition. Okay. Volleyball's a little bit different. They have a different number. And and some other sports like swimming and cross-country don't have a minimum number of events that you have to um, compete in. But let's just say basketball. So the one trip for basketball might be, we go from here to Valdez and then Valdez to Toke to play two games. And then we go to Glen Allen to play two games. So there's half of our conference required games to play for, you know, to compete at regionals. So then we come home and then Effie Cochran from Fairbanks comes some weekend and plays us two games. And then um, who's the other team in our region, Nenana, comes another weekend to Cordova and plays two games. So we will then have met our required games to qualify to play at regional competition. And part of the budget that we have built, um, you know, we, we have a little bit of uh, again, assumptions that we're going to set aside some of those funds, assuming that our kids are going to meet those requirements and then go to regionals. So we've got like this little bit of a buffer built in for a team to go to regionals. Um, if that doesn't happen for some reason, I don't know the last time a a team or a an activity in Cordova didn't, you know, participate or qualify for regionals. Um, state, on the other hand, is a little bit of a different, right? That's always a, you got to wait and see um, based on regionals. So if it's, you know, we are, we're budgeting um, the amount of dollars that's needed to meet the minimum um, requirements to participate in a regional uh, competition. And and then if teams get invited by other schools to go and play in Kodiak or in Anchorage at Lumen Christie or wherever, um, they would then be responsible for fundraising and using some of their already fundraised funds to do that.
My other question maybe is real fundamental goes back to, you mentioned the one point two, three, four multiplier. That that, given our Cordova's location, where was that? Who established that multiplier? Um, and we all know that it, the cost of living in Cordova is not really accurate when people don't completely understand what it means to live here and pay for things here.
Yeah. So the base student allocation formula was written into law in the eighties, the early eighties. Um, so there was a a study done. Um, and of course, Anchorage is is the base or the one. So the further you are from Anchorage, uh, the greater your geographic multiplier is.
So it's just ba- is it based on mileage? As how far away from Anchorage you are or or a road system?
I I think it is. I would have to do some research on that to know for sure. But um, yeah, we obviously know getting to Cordova, you're either ferrying except for certain parts of the of the year or flying, which is exorbitantly more expensive than the ferry, of course. Uh, and then all the road system schools, you know, their geographic factors are much tighter because the, they can get um, to places by road more easily.
Is, I I guess I just a a follow-up is, is there ever, would there be a possibility to approach Juno and say this multiplier is not um, particularly fair for Cordova or accurate, I guess?
Yeah. Be, but yes and no, and I'll start with the yes um, first, I guess, is that um, yes, it is a possibility to advocate that way. The no, the no side of me or the no part of that is um, there's been great research done nationally um, by independent um, organizations that say that the way that Alaska's base student allocation formula is written is really um, fair and equitable. And it's almost a model, um, a a model policy or a model law on how to appropriate school funding um, even across the nation. Uh, and so the risk of advocating to open that base student allocation formula up could have very detrimental impacts if it were to go the other way um, in terms of uh, how it's currently written with all of the formulaic um, pieces to it.
Okay. Councilmember Kinsman, do you have a question? Um, Pete Heffner had a council member.
I just, a little follow-up on that. I was around when they initially put this district cost factors in. It was quite a battle. Uh, nobody believed the numbers at the time. So it was just real interesting in the, I think it was back in oh six or oh seven. So they got those numbers in now. Um, and as Alex says, I'm frightened if they open up the formula. There are all of these multipliers and I can't see them doing anything. And actually, one of the biggest contentions right now is uh, Anchorage is saying Matt Sue should be one and Anchorage's costs are higher. So it's, it is kind of funny. Uh, but you know, some of the districts Alex worked in, very far out districts. So there's huge costs, you know, of rural district space, um, more so. But as Alex had, I used to, it's due to social economic reform, uh, here in the state of Alaska has said it was more equitable. Uh, there is sort of talk at times down in Juno about opening up the formula, but it scares the dickens out of me. Just, you know, they're going to add anything to it. And and just in reference, uh, since, you know, um, I've been around for a while and that BSA's increased four point six percent in the twenty years that I've been on the school board. And we all know, you know, costs have kind of extremely gone up. So that that, and Dave referenced the, the, the initially, they started out with House Bill sixty-nine. Uh, Dave referenced the Legislative Finance Office said it was a thousand, eighteen oh eight. Uh, B three sixty-nine was a thousand, this year four hundred, the next four hundred following. That's been changed. So there is uh, talk in the legislature of increasing, you know, uh, funding. And it's got to such a crisis level, as Alex mentioned, we're cutting, you know, using all of our funding to make it through next year. And we're even reducing staff. A lot of times people don't see the actual cuts that the district is making. You know, we don't have any librarians anymore. Um, you know, there's just so much to spend lots. We don't have preschool, you know, I don't know if the city council understands. We don't have preschool anymore. We're reading in kindergarten now, you know, and and yeah, anyway. It's uh, pretty devastating what's happening in the state of Alaska.
Thank you. Yeah, councilmember Sester?
Yeah, um, actually, kind of going back to I, what uh, councilmember Nicholson was referring to, uh, having to do with secure school Title One funds. And we just found out here fairly recently about what they projected allocations might be. I guess a question, maybe it might be something more for some answer to answer. But I guess, how does that factor into the the budget for schools? And the significance of that i- as far as what that might end up being?
I'm, I'm sorry, I might have missed the first part. You were talking about secure rural schools.
Fund, yeah, for, uh, yeah.
So the district doesn't receive those directly, right, the city?
Yeah.
And so if the city is intending or has, you know, has used that receipt for part of its contribution to um, the school district, then if the numbers are panning out like what's recently been presented this week, that's a significant blow to the district. And um, again, we understand and can appreciate the, the um, position that the city finds itself in. Um, and I just kind of shared with you all some of the decisions that we made to get that balanced budget at an assumed, you know, six eighty. So if if there is any additional revenue that we do not receive from whomever, whether that's the state or or the city, um, quite honestly, I'm not sure where where we, where we go as a district. You know, I mean, last year we were talking about um, you know, cutting our uh, activities program and our food service program altogether. And, you know, the native village of Yak stepped in and provided us with a generous amount of money to, to maintain those two specific programs. And and, yeah, like, you know, I don't, I don't want to be a dooms, doomsdayist, but.
Certainly not the final number, what we're seeing right now.
Right.
Advocate for more.
You know.
I'm sure it's a significant part of it.
Yeah. And part of our, you know, part of our strategic vision talks about, you know, learning happening outside of the four walls of the building. Obviously, the primary instruction happens, you know, in the school setting. But the opportunities for students to, to go and travel and to see the world, not only in Alaska, but beyond, we feel is critically important to the student's overall development and the potential contributions that they can make, not only to this community, but to, you know, the larger, larger world, as it were. I know, you know, we've talked administratively about, you know, what, what that would look like. Speculation, of course, but, you know, we've, we've talked with people that said, yeah, if, if my kid is unable to play sports or engage in activities, we're likely to move, which then has a significant economic impact potentially to Cordova as well. And the more students we lose, the less revenue we receive, you know, from the state. And the, the potential contribution from the city, right? There's a statutory minimum and a statutory maximum allowable. And historically, it's easy to see that the city has given darn near the maximum allowable contribution, aside from a few years ago. But really darn close, if not always right at the max. And the student population number doesn't necessarily impact what that contribution is. It's really based on the property value, the assessed property value in town with some really intricate multipliers as well. And then you look at the previous year's contribution and you do a little bit of math to say which one is greater or which one is less. And then that becomes what the, the contribution can be. So, yeah, I think, you know, we're all feeling the potential ripple effect of, you know, the hard decisions that are in front of you as a council, as well as our board members contemplating trying to provide the best educational opportunity for our kids while still, you know, being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Councilmember Mickelson.
I'm, I'm going to be real brief here because I know we're kind of over time. But Yakatah School District has a lot of homeschool students that were previously not in the school district and they created a program for them to help basically come up with more revenue for the school district. And I don't know if there's that many homeschool kids here currently, but is that something that the district is capable of doing and/or has any interest in?
So we currently have a correspondence school program, which sometimes is synonymous to a homeschool. And correspondence school are slightly different, but for all intents and purposes, we can use those interchangeably. So we do have a correspondence school. In any given year, we have two full-time students to five at any given time. And I think when that was developed and Pete, who was on the board at that time, certainly can speak to it. But the idea was to not establish itself as a statewide correspondence program because we didn't at the time want to pull kids away from other school districts because it's all distance and remote anyways. And, you know, if we were to, like during COVID, for example, we had upwards of 30 students enrolled in our correspondence program. And we, at that time, had to have one person basically assigned to be that contact teacher. So state statute requires that students who are in a correspondence school or homeschool setting have to have monthly contact from a certified teacher. And so the more students that you have, the more resources that you need to allocate to maintain that statutory requirement of, of monthly contact, you know, by a certified teacher.
Thank you.
So I guess that was a long way to answer your question of short answer. We haven't really seriously considered expanding or becoming a statewide correspondence program because the revenue that we would generate from it is really insignificant.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Adams, yeah.
Just one more question. What does the grant world look like? I know that in the past, the school district has been the recipient of grants. And have they dried up? Are they harder to find? Is there, are there any on the horizon?
So currently, the, the district receives a Title 1A and 1C. So that 1A is low income and 1C is migrant. There's a 2A title grant that's professional development. A Title IV federal grant is, it's called the Well-rounded Education Grant. And then there's a Title 6B grant and a Section 619 grant of that 6B. And that's for special education. So over the course of the last five years, our, and I just sent this information to Senator Murkowski not too long ago, those have been reduced upwards of 40% over the last five years. And so for us, like the 6B grant, the special education grant, we have historically used those resources to pay for a school psychologist, occupational therapist, a speech language pathologist, and did I say physical therapist, occupational therapist? So we don't have those people on staff and we couldn't afford to keep them on staff if we did. And we are required, you know, by federal law to address the special education needs of students, regardless if we have the funds or not. So as those grants have been reduced, we have had to use our general fund dollars to pay for those contractors to provide services. Speech, language, pathology, we do via tele, distance delivery. And we have our professionals, our teacher aides, provide service with the supervision of an SLP. Our occupational therapist, this year we were lucky enough and last year to have somebody from CCMC. So we had a contract with CCMC to provide those services. And we weren't paying for flights and, and lodging and so forth and per diem. So that was helpful. We haven't had a need for a physical therapist, although it looks like we might have a couple of students in the upcoming year or so needing special education services. So we will have to find and likely have to contract outside for a physical therapist to come periodically, as well as occupational therapy. And so again, 40% of the totality of those grants, and again, they're for very different purposes, have been probably close to 400,000, maybe a little bit more cumulatively. And, you know, the Title 1A and 1C funds we use for staffing to provide instructional support for our teacher aides. So if, if those funds go away, then we have to figure out what to do. Either we don't retain those folks, even though they're providing critical services to students, or then we start drawing out of our general fund to pay for those expenses, which then has the ripple effect of, well, we're counting on revenue from the state and from the city to kind of meet those general, those general operation needs. And then we go into our fund balance, which isn't always replenishable. And so it's complex, complex for sure.
Yeah. Thank you. So I think maybe we should try to wrap up. We do have a, a public hearing scheduled. I don't know if anybody is here. Anyway, but, but I wanted to say thank you very much for coming and for having this conversation. I think it's been super helpful just to hear your perspective, get some of the information behind the numbers, based on what councilmembers asked about. So I really appreciate your time. I, I don't want to cut anybody off. Are there any other last minute questions?
I was just going to make a comment in that it's really nice to meet with you. I mean, it's depressing, it's depressing with our budget, but it's really nice to meet with you. And I just, I think you, I would hope that you could go away knowing that we will do all that we can do for the school within. And that's exactly the same thing we're trying to do with the rest of the city services too, you know? It's just a difficult time right now. But admire everything you do. And I'm just so sad that you, and I'm so glad though, that you explained you cut $900,000 out of your budget. That's just, I'm sad.
If I may, I would offer that, you know, I'm, I'm very accessible or I would like to think that I'm accessible to folks. So if you see me on the street and have questions, don't, don't feel shy about stopping me or coming by the office or sending me an email if you want or need information or perspective or you want to come and see what's happening in the school during the course of the day with the resources that we do have. I'd be happy to kind of walk you around either the school buildings or both as your time and interest permits.
Yeah, I have a feeling that to follow up on councilmember Sherman's comment that we will be talking a lot more about, about the school budget and all of our financial needs. So, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll. Adjourn the work session? Yes. Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Any motion to adjourn? No, just saying, yeah, we're adjourning. Thank you. Maybe I'll do a quick. You want to just take a few minutes or no? We going right into it? Well, I just thought we could do the public hearing. I don't know that, I'm guessing we don't have much comment. We could repeat.
Hang on because I did a different Zoom for the public hearing.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, then sure, let's take a break. I don't think that will, sure. I don't think this will set us back too much on the meeting.
Are we taking a break?